Really?
I know. I saw it before. So I was like, right.
Yes. Of course.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Regular Public Meeting. Today is Wednesday, the 22nd of February, 2023. We're here at the Linwood Campus. Could everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali. Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29th, 2023 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the home news Tribune, Sentinel, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's nice to have a full audience here. We have some very special presentations. Our first one is probably the most special, being that we are here tonight to honor many of you sitting in this room. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sheroka. Thank you.
So typically, this is a presentation we have historically done in May, in late May. And when we were looking at the calendar this year, we were like, well, why do we wait so long? Because we acknowledge our Teachers of the Year in early December and let them know that they've won this award. So why wait so long? So we decided this year that we would move it up to the February meeting, and Ms. Kita gets the honor of being our emcee this evening and bringing everybody up. And I will play photographer again as well, so just get ready. So, Mrs. Kita?
Thank you, Mrs. Sheroka. And the Board of Ed. Welcome, everybody. This is a really special time of year, and as Mrs. Sheroka said, typically, we usually have done this recognition later in the school year, towards the end of the school year in May. However, this is a process that starts in September, that I'm going to go over a little bit, how the program works that is sponsored by the New Jersey Department of Ed, and then our own that was established a couple of years ago. We also have our own Education Support Person of the Year. So this is such an honor to be able to get to present and honor so many of you here tonight, certificated staff and support staff. And although this is my 22nd year in this district, and actually, I was also a Governor's Educator of the Year back in 2004. But, you know, I really can speak to just how, and again, I've seen how much the profession has changed and how many challenges we have. And, you know, I chose this picture, and I know maybe a little hard to see, but, you know, it's someone who's climbing a mountain and a beautiful scenery in the background, and all of you here tonight being honored. You know, you have those mountains to climb. We have those challenges, no matter what your role is, no matter what stakeholder role you play in this district. And you all demonstrate that you are able to meet those challenges, and that's strength, just like this mountain climber. And that really spoke to me about, you know, the type of people that we employ here in this district, people like you. And it is such an honor to be able, to be recognized by your peers, by your administrators, by your parents, you know, that support you. And we're here tonight, so without further ado, I just want to, like I said, I want to go over a little bit about the background in terms of how these awards are designed. And again, I don't expect you to be able to read that. I did just want to put up. But like I said, this process starts in September. For the Governor's Educator of the Year, this is sponsored by the New Jersey Department of Ed. There is, you know, a two-month nomination period that starts in mid-September and goes till mid-November, and it's an entire school community that gets to be able to nominate: administrators, staff members, students, parents, community members. And then each school forms a diverse panel, following state program guidelines to go through nominations and ultimately select the candidate. By December 9th, which is also determined by the state, in early December, then principals announce their educator of the year. And in mid-December, the New Jersey Department of Ed actually reaches out to the educators of the year and encourages them to also apply for county. Couple of years ago, we worked with the MBTEA, and this is not, you know, an MBTEA award per se, but we did work together when they came to us to recognize our support people as well. And this could be clerical, secretarial, custodial. We have technicians that have been awarded. It just is what is considered an non-certificated staff as well, and recognize that they are just as much of an integral part of our stakeholder team as those that are in the classroom or in the classroom working with the students every day. So we mirrored what the state has set up for the Governor's Educator of the Year, and we mirrored the same process for our support people of the year. So without further ado, we are going to call up each principal by school, and they're going to talk about their recipients. So we are going to start with the high school. If I can have Principal Mr. Neller come up. Julie Mercier is the high school educator, Governor's Educator of the Year, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, but Ray Collela was their support person of the year.
Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight as the principal of high school to acknowledge our Teacher of the Year for 2022, 2023, Mr. Julie Mercier. Congratulations. If you gave us one of the best nights of the year, we get to honor our staff who truly excel in the classroom. Each year, we play a committee together that reviews all of the applicants, and I can tell you that this year, by far and away, the choice was Julie. Not only do I think very highly of her, but so do her colleagues, the ones who nominated her, the ones who work with her every day. And what stands out to her the most is that she's relatable to her colleagues. She's a big part of the ninth grade PLC that worked very hard together to help our students from the middle school transition to the high school in the English department. She develops lessons. She comes in with creative ideas, and they work together very well to really support those students as they embark on their high school career. Karen is, I could go on for hours about how caring she is, not only in school but outside of school. She has made it her commitment, and I truly believe will be lifelong, of preparing students for college. She helps students write their college essays. Students who are peppers, freshmen, know her for the next three years, and they know they can always come back to Mercs and they can seek help and support and guidance as they prepare themselves for college. And I know she not only does that in our school building, she does it outside of school in the community where she lives. And I actually saw on Facebook about a student who never thought he would get into the college, his dream college, and she worked with him and helped him write his essay and helped him with his application, and he got into that university. So she's not only impacting students in North Brunswick, she's impacting a lot of students in this area. And for that, I am truly honored to honor you tonight, Julie, as our Teacher of the Year, as well deserved. Congratulations.
I also just wanted to, I also just wanted to display our Educators of the Year received this lovely apple clock, and it's really nice. It has an engraving with their name of the year, educator of the year, and their building. So I'll have this for you in English, too. So all guesses to you, Julie.
I love you, Mercs.
Mr. Speller told me that if I didn't prepare something, that they would make mistakes. So I did prepare something. I cannot even take your detour in the room, so it very sucks. Thank you, Mr. Neller, the board. Love it. My brother Ralph, à la Abby, and especially, my husband Adrian, who fuels and supports all of my crazy aspirations. None of this happens without Adrian. I'm extremely lucky to be surrounded by my hardworking, intelligent, creative work family. At MBTHS in English, we support one another, share ideas, hold each other accountable, and laugh every single day. We're very fortunate to have the kids that we do. They're incredibly special, and thank you so much for the honor.
Unfortunately, our Educational Support Person of the Year, Ray Collea, cannot be here, and I'm pretty sure that Ms. Mercier had a role in nominating Ray. Ray's a custodian at the high school, and one of his areas of cleaning is the English department. And I can tell you that they love him. They truly believe, you know, he goes above and beyond, and it's not just cleaning. He's worried about students. He worries about the teachers. He always makes sure that they're well taken care of, that everything is well supplied. You know, I call him the king of the walkie-talkie because every school, he's everywhere. A custodian needs help pulling out the bleachers in the gym, he's there. If they need to take the retractable walls out for our auditorium to expand, he's there. You know, he goes above and beyond, just walking in at night and cleaning his area and going home. He truly cares about our school. He cares about our students, and he certainly cares about our staff. And there was a lot of staff members who recognized him, probably the most I've ever seen for one person. So truly is a testament to him. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening. He worked his shift, and he just, he didn't want to miss any work, and he didn't feel he'd be able to get here in time. So unfortunately, I tried to get him to come, but he couldn't make it. But I just wanted to say a few words about Ray. He truly is deserving of the Educational Support Person of the Year at MBTHS.
We also have plaques for our Support Person of the Year, so if you can take this to Ray, and I would be amiss if I did not thank our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technologies Administrative Assistant, Sandy Pedersen, who is not here tonight. She helps create the plaques and the award. So again, I would like to publicly thank her as well for her participation and help they put together tonight. Moving on to the middle school, I'd like to call up Principal Mr. Rick Salover to honor our Educator of the Year, Janice Mahala, and our Support Person of the Year, LeAnn Farmer.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kita. Janice Mahala, whom I have the good fortune of knowing for a few different lenses. I was her supervisor for a while. She taught my kids, now is principal, and we could say neighbor, right? Absolutely. And it's nice to have someone in the building who I can finally discuss good German cooking with. My grandmother would say, well, still eat a good meal, right? Anyway, Janice is as all-in as you could possibly be, and that's one of my favorite phrases, you know, as an employee, as a teacher, as a colleague. She is a subject area leader for her entire department, and she's a great liaison between herself and her department and administration. She's a dynamite teacher, and she's also, as a building rep, we have such a great rapport. We are able to solve problems by just talking it out. We've never had a crossword, ever, right? I guess I would say also that I've never seen a teacher be able to balance so well: what's good for my kids, what's good for my class, and what's good for the whole school all at the same time? Usually, people have a singular focus. Janice is able to somehow provide that focus many ways. As an example, she voluntarily took on a lot of extra work this summer to help us design a new bell schedule. It was perky, and we could not have gotten it done without her. We really appreciate it. Janice, I'm going to have the entire staff congratulate you. No one deserves it more than you.
I'll do a question. I didn't prepare. I am really truly lucky, though. I've worked with some of the best staff on the planet, and I couldn't do all the things that I do if I didn't have the support of my colleagues and the administration in my building. You're really fabulous to work with, and I really wouldn't want to work with anybody else. I also would like to thank my family, my husband, my daughter are here tonight. They put up with me being at school, in meetings, on Zooms or Google meetings, on the phone, and they put up with it with pretty good humor, and so I think that would have to...
LeAnn Farmer. LeAnn started with us back when we were back at Linwood as a building aide, right? And then jumped at the opportunity to become tech support, and that was a crash course, am I right? She learned a lot very quickly, and in no time at all, you would not believe that she had not been doing it for years, right? She is also our version of the Anor Dazar Bunny. She is tireless. She is always on the go. She walks faster than any human I've ever seen. From room to room, she's always willing to help. And again, the knowledge she has gained in being able to help students with Chromebook issues, or staff with a new line board, or even me in the auditorium when we have to set up for a presentation. And don't forget, all in the new building, with new technology. I mean, the amount of things that she has learned and been able to apply and help people with in short orders, nothing short of amazing, right? Always willing to help, first in line to help, and we really couldn't function where we are right now as well as we do without LeAnn. LeAnn, congratulations. A runaway winner.
I have to agree with what Janice said, though. What we do, we could not do without the staff that we have in the building, the administration we have in the building to support us. It really is just the best place to work. Makes it fun and easy to do.
Was that fun part recorded? We needed a faculty meeting.
LeAnn's not actually recording it, too, maybe? This time, we'd like to call up our Linwood Principal, Mr. J.D. Shorter, to honor Emily Fennick, our Educator of the Year, and Greg Coslin, the Support Person of the Year for Linwood.
Good evening, everyone. I am so excited that this guy is finally here.
Is it actually, can you use the microphone because they're recording it and it won't catch you?
Okay. Okay, not too loud. So I just want to also say thank you to all of my Linwood family members who are here to support our two people we're being honored, we have a lot of staff members here, and I'm sorry for that. So first, we're going to talk about Emily Fennick. So I wrote a couple of things down, I don't want to do this loud. All right, so the four things that I wrote down about Emily is that she is knowledgeable. She is extremely knowledgeable, and she really is just a strong piece in her PLC. I know that they lean on her a lot, so she does a great job there. She is very caring, and it's just apparent when you go into her classroom and see the way she interacts with students, and even our challenging students, they melt in her hands like evidence. This is amazing that she cares so much, and they know that she cares. She's dedicated. She's devoted to providing an excellent education experience for all of her students. And finally, she is a leader. Last year, she began a mentorship program in our school to help students get a positive influence with others, and that mentor program is still going on today. So she is doing an amazing job. One quick little story I'll give on Emily is, she called me one day on like a Saturday morning. Usually, as principals, when you get that Saturday morning call, you're like, oh. But she was calling because one of her students wrote something in his Google Classroom account, and she was really concerned. So on a Saturday, you know, to even look at your Google account, she wanted, and then it called me, and so I ended up calling the kid to make sure he was okay, but that just shows you what type of person she is. So I'm so thankful that she's on our team, and I want to congratulate you on being one of the Educated Teacher of the Year for Linwood.
You said more to me. I just want to say thank you to my family, my friends, both Parsons and Linwood, because that's where I started, for all of the support. I wouldn't be here without every single person that I've worked with. So thank you.
My friend, Ray. So Greg did not want flowers, and I'll tell you, Greg didn't even want this award. When I kind of heard his name being kind of talked about, he comes to me and says, J.D., just remember, I don't want any awards. And I'm like, okay, whatever you say. This is my buddy. So I really enjoy what I do. Again, I love, I wake up in the morning at 4:40 every day, and I'm ready to go because I can't wait to get to school. So one of the faces that I normally see when I do my walkthrough in the morning about 6:55 is this guy. And we have like a challenge back and forth because we say, who's doing the best? So I say excellent, and he tried to beat me with his word, but this guy is awesome. I wrote a couple of things down that I want to talk about. So Greg goes above and beyond. Whatever you ask this man to do, he does it. He doesn't complain, and he does it right. We had a couple of things that we wanted done in our main office, and he had to quietly do it because we didn't want to take him for one of his other duties that he had to do, but he did it. And he did it so well that we were so happy, and just so happy that he's our guy. He's always smiling at you now. He has a positive attitude, and we do challenge each other on how excellent he's ever been at that. Reliable. You can tell this guy or ask him to do something, and he is going to do it, and you don't have to ask him twice, and it's just awesome to have someone like that. The last thing I'll say, he is a team player. I have never heard him say, well, that's not my role, or that's not my job, or that's not in my job description. So he just does everything that, you know, I could ever ask him to do. So I really love this guy. I teach him a lot, because I tell him I love him, and his wife is jealous. But I do love this guy, and again, I cannot say enough about this individual because they may work at Lincoln School or something. So I want to say thank you to them. I was just going to say thank you, little Fennick.
This time, I'd like to call up Principal Ann Kingsley of John Adams to award our Educator of the Year from John Adams, Arun Bupusta, and our Support Person of the Year...
of the Year from John Adams, Arwen Bupusta, and our Support Person of the Year, Francine Oliva.
I would like to talk first about Arwen. Arwen is our general music teacher. She's been at John Adams for 19 years, and some of the great things about her, I mean, all those things up there are absolutely true, but I'm going to say a few extra things. You can read those, and you can listen to what I have to say also. Arwen was a valuable member and support person for the NBTDA for many, many years, so that's, you know, great for the staff in our school. She makes all of her students feel welcome. She really, as it does say up there, she goes above and beyond to teach students with diverse backgrounds. That really is true. She loves every kid, no matter who the kid is, she loves them, even the difficult ones. She does a lot of, that's true, there are some difficult ones, and she does love them, okay? Makes them all feel very, very welcome. She does a lot of extra things around the building. Right now, we have a bulletin board close to the art room that's a make one, take one, and I actually got one today. I told you that, a girl brought me one. They're hearts, and you write inspirational things on them, and you can take one if you feel like you need one, or you can make ones for somebody else. So some girl decided to take one but give it to me, which was very nice, and I appreciate that. I guess I did well there, right? She also has in the faculty room a wow board, where the teachers can either celebrate other teachers and great things that they are doing. Oh, hi Julie Mercy, how you doing?
I'm Anne.
You're doing great. Or they can celebrate themselves. If they want to say something very happy to them, they can put that on the wow board, too. She's very fun and outgoing, lots of personality. If you ever go to any of our concerts, you can see how she just loves what she does, and she also volunteers for a lot of school committees, and things that she doesn't have to do, just extra kind of things. So she's really a great person to have in the building, and we're very lucky to have her as our music teacher. She, I would just add a little personal note, she helped my son, who is also a music teacher, practice for his piano exam when he was in college, so I was very appreciative of that , you know, because it worked, you guys do great. Congratulations.
If you know me, you know that I'm a person of many words, but today I don't really have that many. I will just say that thank you to everyone who has been a student or a staff member at John Adams Elementary School in the past 19 years, because you have been my why for that whole time, and so, and my support people, you're here. They're the reason why I make it for every single day, so thank you to all of my friends who helped me do this, because I've been doing it.
Now, I would like to talk about our Support Person, who is Fran Oliva. Fran Oliva, I don't know how long you've been with us, but I know it's been quite a bit, 15 years, okay? Thank you. Fran is an educational assistant in one of our CG classes, it's a special education class, and her teacher is here also back there, because she wanted to support her. And, you know, it's not, it's not an easy job working in some of the special ed classes, but she makes it look easy. Those kids love her, they listen to her, she is truly, truly a second teacher in the classroom. I really mean that, you know that, right Fran? Sometimes we do, we are second teaching in the classroom, right? So the great thing about her is that she understands that all children learn differently, but she's willing to support those kinds of things. She supports all those children. She helps the students with their behaviors so that they can follow school-wide expectations. We have a PBRS system, and those children are really, you know, she keeps on them in a nice way. She's always smiling, and she's always helpful, she's optimistic, and she does whatever needs to be done in the classroom. So we are exceptionally lucky to have Fran as a member of our team, and also very happy that she is the North Brunswick Support Person of the Year for John Adams. So congratulations.
I just want to say I'm very honored to work with such a devoted and dedicated group of educators. I feel very supported at all times, and I've made a lot of friends who are now my family at John Adams. So I appreciate that. And thank you to my family, my husband's here to support me, and thank you all so much.
Jill Ward, our Educator of the Year, Lynn Livingston, and Support Person of the Year, Sarah Soler.
To my left is Dr. Glover, Director of Elementary Instruction. I'd like to say to the board, very happy that you're able to see the fruits of a lot of your hard work and labor in action. I'm sure you're sitting there very proud of what's gone on. There's an awful lot that goes on that you've been very supportive of that makes this place go. And the superlatives that are announced, you know, we have ours, and we think they're better than everybody else's. And then to hear what's going on in every single building in this district, it's just amazing. And I always feel lucky to be part of this organization. That's from the board to assistant superintendent, not the lawyer, and everybody else. I'd like to thank everybody for being a part of this wonderful team. Our Teacher of the Year, I put the first word there, I'm taking credit for that one. It's hard to be an effective leader and be humble, and she does it better than anybody else. It's hard to compliment her, she goes about her business, and she's our grade level leader for second grade. And for instance, we changed two of our second grade teachers last year to this year to teach a different grade level. Wasn't excited about it. Professional? Yes. Advocate for the students? Yes. Advocate for the teachers on the second grade level? Yes. Lost the battle, but she did a great job in a humble way. And now what happens? The grade level that the teachers were moved to and the second grade work as a team. So she took what could have been looked upon as something difficult, which it was, and turned it into a positive to make everything better for the students first and the staff afterwards. And that's just, that's evidence one of numerous things. The second grade is always in the forefront of doing creative things, running by, inviting us to classes to see this, to see that, we have this idea, that idea. She's collaborative, you know, I hear about their 24/7 text chains amongst themselves, and that's, that's her being an effective leader without being top-down. She's supportive of everyone that she comes into contact with. I'm very proud to say I'm the principal at Judd, and she's one of the reasons why. I'd like to just invite Ms. Robinson and Ms. Myers, if you would just come on over, and you could bring her with you. There's, there are two of her people, or she's one of their two people, however you want to state it, I just want them here, I think it's important that they're here, and I'm handing over the mic to Aileen.
I'm very, very honored and humbled by this award. It's very unexpected. I've always wanted to be a teacher, I finally was, I changed careers to do this very thing, and what I've learned from my colleagues and friends and administration, I could not have done this job without them. And the staff at Judd is the best, and I thank you all.
I would want to agree, the staff at Judd is the best. And not only do we have, yeah. Not only, of course, do we have our Teacher of the Year, we have our Support Person of the Year, who by the way is leaving us this year, she's retiring, and that is Ms. Sarah What's not up there, which could very well be first, is passionate. Sarah is passionate for the students in her charge. She's another one that goes about her business, is great for the students, doesn't tell anybody about it, doesn't ask for anything, just goes about her business and not only being supportive of her students, but of the other adults in the room. She's upbeat, she's caring, she's flexible. She's been in numerous roles in her career. Takes it with a smile. When I say takes it, because it's not easy to change. You know, change is difficult until you get your feet wet for a little while. Sarah's never one to complain. She comes to work every day, she works really hard, and as a colleague said, Ms. Kingsley, second teacher in the room, the joy she brings to students' faces, you know, I walk by the cafeteria in the morning, I mean, during lunchtime, always engaged, just always engaged. It's just amazing how hard she works. I'm very proud to announce you as our Support Person of the Year, Sarah Solerno.
Thank you to my husband, John, who is probably surprised that everything is here. Yeah, Judd is a passion, it's always been a passion. Children are just, and I, it's just a great roller coaster ride, and I'm excited to end it on an upbeat. Thank you.
Once again, board superintendent, thank, and Amy, thank you very much for your support. Now, a lot of this doesn't happen unless we have a lot of things in place, and a lot of things are in place, so thank you all.
This time, I'd like to call up Mr. Sid Dawson, Principal Livingston Park, to honor Livingston Park's Educator of the Year, Jennifer Saber, and their Education Support Person of the Year, Aileen.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about two really special people we have at L.P. Meet Jen Saber, who is our Educator of the Year. Jen is a math academic support teacher in our school, works with kids from all different grade levels. Some things that came to mind to me are Jen is dynamic, she is always radiantly positive in the way she approaches kids. Kids enjoy math just because she enjoys math. She's got that infectious enthusiasm that really inspires kids, especially at the elementary level. She's engaging, her lessons are really fun to watch. She is so precise with her instruction. She knows exactly where kids are, what will motivate them, what will get them to do their very best work, and then she gets so excited when they do well. She's got a wonderful attitude. Many mornings, I need to come to Jen and say, "Jen, I need you to teach this today," or "do this today," and she always does it with a smile. Her colleagues love her, she's collaborative, she's engaging, she's encouraging to them. So when I think about Jen, the last word to me kind of sums it up. She's the epitome, I think, of what we would want our children to have in a teacher. You know that moment in September where you wonder who your child's teacher is and what they'll be like? Everything you would quote from your childhood experience is embodied by Jen. So we are so lucky to have her at L.P. Congratulations.
Put me in front of six-year-olds, it's really easy to talk. I just want to say thank you to my admin at Livingston Park, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Fittingham, Ms. Maury, they make it easy, they're so supportive, they trust the process for our math academic support team, and so I thank you, I appreciate this honor from you. And thank you to my L.P. family, you guys, constant support and love just makes it easy, makes every day easy to get up and get there. I know it's early mornings, but we do it, we get together, make it happen. And my math support team, you guys are amazing, my math coach, Leigh, and I don't know if she's here, Beth, our supervisor, she's amazing, and my whole, like I said, L.P. is a family, and I don't think I could have done it for all these years without their support and their encouragement and their love. So and thank you to all who came, I see you out there, thank you. And then last but not least, I'd like to thank my husband and my son who came. Thank you for putting up with me the other day, because after all my exciting math lessons, I felt exhausted, and so I just need to, you know, veg out, but they put up with me and they support me, so thank you.
I'd also like to speak for Aileen Lonzo, who unfortunately is under the weather and couldn't join us tonight. Aileen is a really wonderful special education parent professional in our school, and I think she is the most fun of anybody in the building. She is always in a great mood, she loves the kids, and the kids love her. I've actually had parents come to me and request to be in Ms. Lonzo's class. I had to say, "Your child isn't really long in that program." She's dynamic, she's positive, the teachers love her, she's supportive, and she's another one who just has that wonderful enthusiasm that the kids really gravitate to. I must confess, there are several occasions, we just got a new playground for some of our students at L.P., and I was walking by one of them, and I was, "That's a really tall child." And it wasn't a child, it was Mrs. Lonzo using the playground on top of the jungle chair. And I have to be a double do that, but she does, because that's what the kids love. And she engages them in a really special and fun way. So Aileen, we know you're watching, come home, congratulations, and we'll be coming by later with some flaps.
This time, I'd like to call up our Parsons Principal, Mrs. Diana Whalen, to introduce Parsons' Educator of the Year, Vicky Fernandez, and their Support Person of the Year, Samir Akka.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education and our Central Office Administrators for the importance that they put into this program, the value that you give to honoring the people who are taking care of our children each and every day. There's many school districts that have moved away from this program, and it truly is humbling how important it is to North Brunswick and how we continue to do this year after year. So I thank you for that. Also, congratulations to all of our award recipients today, very well deserved. I'd like to start with our Educator of the Year, Ms. Vicky Fernandez, who is an outstanding educator and leader at Parsons School. When I stopped to think about how I would describe Vicky, and Amy asked for four words, I said, "Four words, only four words." I must have had three different lists that I had to cut back. But the following words came to mind. Vicky's a tenacious, selfless leader who's a lifelong learner. I'd like to start with our Educator of the Year, Ms. Vicky Fernandez, who is an outstanding educator and leader at Parsons School. When I stopped to think about how I would describe Vicky, and Amy asked for four words, I said, "Four words? Only four words?" I must have had three different lists that I had to cut back. But the following words came to mind. Vicky's a tenacious, selfless leader who's a lifelong learner. She's one of the most tenacious, flexible people that I know, and she does it all with a positive attitude and a genuine smile. Year after year, Vicky welcomes a full class of kindergarten students of varying abilities and elevates them to fully functioning and capable members of the Parsons School community. Her students are always engaged due to their excitement over their love of learning, which is cultivated in her loving but structured classroom environment and respectful rapport. Vicky is held in high regard as a leader by her colleagues and administration as she serves as a grade-level leader and facilitates many school-wide committees, including our Sunshine Committee. Vicky truly is selfless. She puts all others before herself and would do anything possible to support her students and colleagues. Vicky's a lifelong learner and is always seeking professional development to enhance her craft. She's a natural teacher with a passion for reaching students and rising above any challenge with which she has faced. Vicky is a wonderful model. She's the window through which many children will see their future. Congratulations.
So, I wasn't worn, but I needed a speech. But, thank you to my dream team admin, Parsons has the most amazing administration team that I have seen, and I'm really lucky to be with it and be with my Parsons family. Thank you to my parents for doing my support system, of course, and my fiance who deals with my bolts and boards at midnight, Hudson does all of my drawings, because I am not an artist, but he's better than I am. And to my Parsons family, I wouldn't be here without them, and thank you. It's an honor.
And for our Educational Support Person of the Year, we have Samira Akhtar. Samira serves as our clerical aide in the library, as well as a regular substitute teacher whenever the need arises. She also often is a translator for us for students and parent-teacher conferences. She's caring, flexible, dependable, and a true team player. Samira is constantly working to support teachers, students, and other staff in their daily routines. In the media center, the students enjoy her company and her book recommendations. No matter the task, Samira handles it with ease and a smile on her face. She exudes warmth and positivity in all that she does. To that end, Samira wrote a book that was published entitled Awesome Alphabets. She donated several copies to our school. Awesome Alphabets is a positive book for children, with each letter of the alphabet beginning a new word that affirms great qualities in children everywhere. It helps children to realize that they are awesome and they can do great things. Her final words in the book are a true testament to who Samira is and all she embodies. We are all important and serve a purpose. Thank you for sharing your positivity and love of children with all of us at Parsons School. Congratulations, Samira. We are so thankful.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. I really appreciate the honor. Thank you, Parsons staff. Everybody is so kind and everybody is so helpful. We cannot do it alone. It's a teamwork. Thank you, everyone.
Well, Mr. Pazner, our Early Childhood Center Principal, Mr. Scott Pazner, here to talk about the ECCs, Educator of the Year, Judith Pascoochi, and our Support Person of the Year, Jo DePain.
I want to welcome Jo and Judith up here to start, and I want to thank Board Education, Central Office Administration, all the people here, the entire community. And this is one of the most special nights in our country, the chance to honor and celebrate all the success that's happening throughout our district. I am so fortunate to work with such caring, kind, and compassionate people, and Judith and Jo are the embodiment of what we want to produce, a welcoming school environment that all students, families, and staff feel comfortable. You hear a lot tonight, the same thing, which is above and beyond expectations. We can't have two more people that demonstrate that on such a daily basis. On the start with Mrs. Pascoochi, she is one of our amazing preschool teachers in the ADA program at Parsons Elementary School. Her ability to welcome students and families into our community at such an important point in their life and make those connections for those families, there's no words to describe that. We're so fortunate to have her, besides being dedicated, caring, collaborative with her team, engaging, supportive. She's a team player, helping out Read Across America, Bubbles for Autism. She also does so many other things within the building, it's more welcoming in student observers to see what she's doing and successes she's had in other classes. We had tomorrow's teachers come to work with her as well, and we're just so fortunate to have her. I can't be more fortunate to work with such an amazing teacher. Judith, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored to be a part of North Brunswick. I truly believe that we're a family here at North Brunswick, and I wouldn't be here tonight without the support of my colleagues, administration, and our family. So I just want to say thank you to everyone.
There's not much I can say about Mr. Joe. Mr. Joe is one of the most welcoming, kind, caring individuals that you can ever meet. His support of the staff in North Brunswick schools, no matter what he's asked to do, going above and beyond. A team player, always resourceful, a problem solver, who's always thinking of ways to resolve things that come up on a daily basis. But again, I want to go back to that above and beyond. Joe has done so much for our students, our staff, our community, to really bring us together. You know, I have to bring up an example where Joe, again, went above and beyond. This year, for those of us in preschool, we had Touch a Truck event to welcome all the preschool students from across the district. We wanted the students and families to see how we are a warm, welcoming, tight-knit community. Mr. DePain set up our parking lot with police officers, fire department, EMS. We had trucks from different places. We had Logan's Towing Company. We had students on those fire trucks with big smiles. We had families interacting. We had ice cream truck, too. It was giving out a lot of ice cream. That one never ended. But, the key thing was this, Joe's ability to bring the team and the community together as we separate us in North Brunswick. And again, we are so fortunate to have him, and sadly, as Mr. Patel has shared, sadly I guarantee you, Mr. DePain will be retired. And one thing I know is he'll never be able to build his shoes. Thank you, Joe. Congratulations. I'm so proud and fortunate to work with you. And instead of a, you can't do that, this is a store.
Thank you, Scott. Well, first off, I'm going to start by thanking my wife, because she's over there. I have three children with children, and they're all texting her, why aren't we there? Why aren't you there? The kids go to bed at seven o'clock, and I knew this wasn't going to be a quick ordeal. So, you know, like when we all take them out to dinner, and grandpa picks up the check, go forget about it. I gotta say, when, eight years ago, when we decided to do this program, I have been working in North Brunswick Board of Ed, I was working out of the athletic department, dealing with, you know, the fields, teams and everything, and I coached football there. So I'm used to dealing with fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids. My boys came, he says, look, we need somebody special to go down to here. I said, aye, aye, I'll do it, I'll do it. I said, whoa, this is rough. The biggest thing you gotta learn is, oh, you gotta go change your diaper. You're a favorite, you gotta tell the teacher. One of the things that I brought to the school, like coaching thirty-some years, and there's one of my boys up there, I said, I'm really, I was so proud of him. But, I saw our staff having like a junior meltdown, so I said, we gotta do something. So, Diane was the principal then. I said, let's just get them together. So I got them together, and I actually gave them a football talk. I said, listen, not everybody can do what you girls do. God chose you to be a special ed teacher and take care of these kids. So I said, in my head, I said, sound pretty good, keep on going. You come here every day, you'll teach them, but you'll also be their parent. And nowadays, it's sad to say, but that's where we are as teachers, support staff, we're parents, as a coach. Like, I know stuff about kids that I'd be afraid to tell their parents, but you have to do that. So it all worked out, the staff rallied, there are a good bunch of girls. We have no men teaching in the little preschool, but it's like Scott says, you gotta go, you gotta do things. We wanted to do Touch a Truck, I said, let me handle this. You know, we got all those people, because I had contacts. And I actually had it on TV, and Rosa over there, I asked her, come on, you can talk on TV. She said, no, I'm not doing the talk. We enjoyed it, we had a good time, and that's what you gotta do. Scott as a principal is great. We just came together as a team, we bust each other, because he's a big seat and hole guy, and I had my Rutgers shirt underneath there. And, you know, that's how it goes. You gotta make your day at work enjoyable, because when it's not enjoyable, it's time to go. Now, mine's still enjoyable, but I figured, eh, it's time to go, because I've got a few other things. As you tell them, I woke off, because without, without Dr. Z, we golf have a good time, there's a lot of money in our pocket. We might do things like that, but I gotta thank everybody, from the board, to the members, the administration, Scott, and, you know, not to be last, but my wife. You know, she sat on this board for eighteen years, and I said, don't you ever tell me anything unless you see my name someplace. I don't know nothing. So, she's a good board member, a good mother, and she's a real good, we're both good grandparents, because, you know, we want to watch them do things with them. So, thank you. It's time we could all go home.
I'm sorry, you guys. No. Doesn't say much.
I'm just gonna get one from, sorry, everybody.
So, last but certainly not least, we also have an Education Support Staff person that represents Central Office, that represents the district, and this year, we have Ms. Donna Daley. Unfortunately, our Supervisor and Director of People Personnel Services, Mr. Harry, could not be here tonight. So presenting for Donna is our Superintendent, Mrs. Janet Turro.
I have worked closely with Donna for many years when I was Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. She reported directly to me, so I feel very comfortable being able to speak to Donna and why she won this award. Again, the words there that Chris spoke of, dedicated, team player, reliable, and dependable, are certainly all perfectly fitting, but, you know, Donna, people don't think about what happens at Central Office. I mean, the role of teachers is so important, the role of instructional aides and techs is also so important. But Donna holds up our technology piece in terms of data. She's our data specialist, and she supports the registration office and all the work that we do, and we have reports, we have no idea how many reports we have to give, right, to NJ Smart, based on all of our student data. It is honestly, it's endless. And as a district, we actually get judged by how accurate that data is. We get CUSAC monitored, they will cut us down if we don't turn our reports in on time, and with over, you know, six thousand students, including the charter students, to make sure that we have proper records for, that everybody's accounted for. I can't say enough about how diligent Donna is and how detail-oriented. It's not an easy job to be that detail-oriented, and we are just so grateful that we have Donna there as the backbone to our data center, so thank you.
As we conclude this portion of our meeting and this presentation, again, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight, and again, a huge congratulations to our award recipients. I look forward to our annual luncheon, where we honor you again, but it's a really great tradition, and that will be coming in the late spring. Also, we'll have from the state, we did this a little earlier this year, we also have certificates from the state for you that will be presented at the luncheon as well. So again, thank you all, much, much well-deserved congratulations to all of our award recipients tonight. Thank you all for coming. It's an honor to work in a district where, as Mrs. Whalen said, we do, as a board, as a Central Office Administration, as school administration, continue this tradition. It is so important, you know, to recognize just the hard work and dedication that we see every day. So again, congratulations to all, and thank you all for coming. So we'll give you guys just a minute to transition out. Mrs. Kita has her Violence and Banalism Report, so if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. It's very exciting.
Turned out there was like a whole conflict.
My friend, how are you?
Congratulations.
Now, I'm back on. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Kita, you are on again, it's a double night.
Yes, it is. Again, thank you to the board, thank you to all the guests who came for our first presentation. Our second presentation tonight, as required by the State of New Jersey, by the Department of Education, school districts are required after what they consider each reporting period, there are two, to report on the district's violence and vandalism report. Typically, it starts on page seventeen of the agenda tonight, it's in there, we provide it for you at the appropriate times of the school year. This reporting period will review July first, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And a couple of things, you know, we discussed, Mrs. Shiroka and I, is typically still on the day is discussing the report and the numbers and the programs and the trainings. But again, this was, you know, really, this is really still considered our first full year back since the pandemic. If you recall, last year, yes, it was our first full year back. But we also still did not have all of our students re-register to come back. It also was that first period that, you know, the year before, we were revoked till January, mid-January that, of that previous school year, two school years ago. And then when we opened, we were hybrid and only twenty-five percent of our students had returned. So it was still a big transition last year. So we wanted to give a lot, a little also more context with our reporting period now that we're really fully back. Because again, as you'll see, starting on page seventeen, we will look at, the state does have us compare to the previous reporting period one of the prior school year. And this is just another copy of the chart that is on page seventeen. It again compares reporting period one of last year to reporting period one of this year. It includes incidents, violence vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, harassment, intimidation, bullying confirmed, that's lumped all together, other incidents leading to removal, and then we'll talk about HIV alleged cases, HIV trainings, HIV programs. So again, and this is the unfortunate trend that we're still seeing, we're seeing throughout the state. As again, a first, another first full year back, numbers, you know, have significantly gone up from the prior year, which we are seeing in other districts across the state and we saw here. So again, you can see between reporting period one from last year to this year doubled. And same thing with other incidents leading to removal, tardy, cutting class, insubordination, disruptive behavior, academic integrity, as the state does label these categories. Out of the harassment, intimidation, bullying alleged cases that were submitted as claims to administration and investigations handled, there were thirty-four in the first four months of school. Because again, even though the reporting period is July and August, you know, our students are not in full session. And out of those thirty-four, thirteen were confirmed under the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. One of the things that we will focus on in this presentation in particular is the HIV training. We're gonna look at in the next slide, how we really front loaded a lot last year as we were all coming really fully back. And what we also are doing, we did the reporting one this year, and what, as we've seen these numbers started to go up as the reporting period one was ending, what we have already done for reporting period two, which started January first and goes to the end of the school year, and other programs and trainings that are already anticipated for the remainder of the school year. Also, we'll look at the programs. And again, that are what the state considers, programs that address anti-bullying. So again, just to compare from last year, and we will be publicizing this as well, to look at that number of forty-eight last year to twenty-six this year. First of all, the district review of the Board of Education policy on HIV, Board Policy fifty-five twelve, we were permitted to enter it under each school last year. And as a district, this year, we was only allowed to be entered as a district. Our annual anti-bullying specialist training that I conduct, last year, seven schools, this year is eight. The State Department of Ed has the ECC now that they are in a full year of being established from childhood center on their own. Previously, they were attached to Judd Elementary School by the state. So we had included the principals. Again, we front loaded more training as everyone was coming back last year. Annual school round review of HIV this year and last year. And we also, again, as everyone was coming fully back, had the school safety team under a separate HIV review as well. That already is scheduled for reporting period two. Monthly HIV and security training for all substitute staff that I conduct along with our district director of security, August through December. So that was, that still continues and we do that every month. Other staff trainings, for example, New Jersey Legal One offers a lot of workshops. So under other, last year there were seven, four were attended to so far this year. One of the other things that we wanted to discuss with the public and with the Board of Ed are other trainings that are related to student behaviors that have been going on during reporting period one. And it's not, it's not that they're not, they're not including the report because they don't follow under that definition of an HIV program by the state. So we wanted to just highlight some of them. We still continue our mental health rebound. And again, because this also addresses those other, what they consider violence and vandalism categories, just because they're not classified by the state as HIV programs, we did want to highlight them. We had several administrators and teachers attending workshops on responsive classroom. We are doing a suspended book study with district leadership. And again, in district professional learning, these are workshops that are offered by our administration and by our T G staff and other certificated staff. So there are, you know, multitude, suicide prevention, how to put out the flames before an explosion, and these are offered at all of our schools. So although we are not at that point yet, we did want to show you reporting period two HIV trains that are current and anticipated. I do quarterly check-ins with the anti-bullying specialists. So wanted to, you know, and I also do mid-year review trainings with them as well. We will also be doing a mid-year review HIV policy and reporting procedures training with the entire leadership team and school safety team. I also, like I said before, we continue our monthly HIV and security training for all substitute staff and New Jersey Law Center and Legal One workshops that we are attending.
Take a sip.
Again, these are also other trainings related to student behaviors that are current and anticipated for, that have started already for reporting period two, it started in January. Again, just gives you some examples of the programs and trainings that our staff and administration are involved in or will be involved in. And again, this won't list them all, we're only, February workshops come up all the time that our staff has to be a part of or has to lead a district. And again, we will be posting this and making this available. This shows the reporting period one HIV programs, they are listed in the agenda as well. Elementary, to point out, is grades pre-K through six. That includes our early childhood center or for elementary schools. And Linwood is actually considered by the state to fall in the elementary category. Middle school is grade seven through eight, and the high school grades nine through twelve. And again, as I mentioned, additional programs that, they're not just isolated to reporting period one, they do continue throughout the year. And I have, you know, I've met with the HIV, the anti-bullying specialists in each building, and we've already been discussing what other programs they're currently running, monthly programs that are anticipated throughout the year. So that's again, why you're also seeing more here. And again, reporting period two is six months compared to before from reporting period one. We have a dedicated anti-bullying information site for parents on our website. We also have an M B two schools HIV site that is part of my department human resources website for all staff. Included in both is the policy, HIV guidance for schools, HIV resources, a quick guide to the State Department's definition for HIV, the NJ DOE, the State Department's HIV parent guide. You know, we, we recognize it has not been easy since the pandemic. And as, you know, we see the behaviors increasing, we are increasing our training. We are currently rolling out, we're piloting, we're part of a pilot with the state, their New Jersey School Climate Initiative NJ Sky surveys that are surveying staff, parents, and students to again, get to the heart of the issues as well, so that we can best address them in our school.
And you know, Amy and I talked this morning, we, you know, before each board meeting, we go through all the HIV reports together, looking at the evidence, thinking about feedback we can also give to our deans who do those investigations. Doing those investigations is not easy. You're dealing with children of all sorts of different ages, as well as what can be parents who are, you know, obviously concerned about their child and worried about their child and everybody's child, you know, you want to be a mama bear and a poppy bear and protect your child. There's a lot that goes on that you've been hearing about in the news about bullying and school responses. And you know, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kita and all of the deans and principals and administrative teams because they work really hard to make sure our schools are safe. There's a lot that goes into it and it's not an easy job. You know, the definition of HIV, of bullying in New Jersey is different than anywhere else in the country. New Jersey created their own definition. So at times, parents can be frustrated by seeing something, thinking something's bullying, but by the definition of New Jersey, it doesn't really fit that definition because it doesn't hit a prescribed factor based on race, sex, a perceived characteristics, gender, or something like that. But it's certainly conflict and maybe the students were wrong for their behaviors. So we really work to have responses to those things. It may be against the code of conduct for the school, but it might not have been found to be bullying, so it's still against our code of conduct. So we try to address all of those situations and deal with them in a way that is supportive of our students and not a one size fits all. We look at every situation individually, investigate it with due process, and then try to find what's going to help our students. Certainly, in some cases, there's no doubt that we need to suspend the students and get them out of the building if it's a, you know, a violent event. And then in other cases, we need to do restorative justice. We need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students because sending them home to sit in front of a TV is not going to help them learn to change their behaviors. So all these programs really build up and add up together to create a picture of a lot of the work that's being done. And you know, it's not done yet, there's a lot to continue to do. And you know, I think this report and the work that we're doing really states and shows that, those efforts.
And you know, I echo, you know, Mrs. Shiroka's sentiments here. And one of the other things is, and again, it's been a testament to this Board of Education and prior boards of education or former administration, Dr. Zakowski, our instructional deans are supervisors and they also serve, we have, you know, one or two per building depending on, you know, the grade levels that, for example, Linwood would have two, the middle school has two, the high school has four, one per grade level. They are, you know, that is also part of their role. And we are very fortunate, and again, thank you to the Board of Education that we have that other level of administration in our buildings to serve as the anti-bullying specialist for each building, and that is part of their dedicated responsibilities. In a lot of other districts, it may be the principal who serves in that role.
Or the school counselor.
Or the school counselor. So you know, we have that extra layer of support. And they're their own, what we call PLC, professional learning community. And working with them over the past couple of years, as I've been new to this role too, they're really, we really do have those quarterly check-ins and we have those forms. But they also are very open to reaching out to me if they have a question during investigation. They reach out to each other. So there's a very open line of communication between all of us as well. And we do go through when we do check-ins, we go through recent case law, you know, in New Jersey and do one of, you know, kind of those scenarios, like what would you do if this type of case presented itself to you, to walk through those exercises? And that's part of our check-ins and internal trainings as well. You know, there's still so much more work to do. You know, and again, you know, we really are dedicated to this, to this work. And again, thankful to, you know, our Board of Ed for their support in this as well.
Any questions or comments, board members?
Well, I just want to say, Mrs. Kita, thank you for putting this presentation together. I think as a board, all of this is very important to us. And to see the fruits of everyone's labor really come together is extremely important. And also to see the programs that are listed in each of the schools is, it's really important for the public to understand and to see that of what, you know, our efforts are doing every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I also just wanted to give a quick sentiment to our first presentation. I know that we had, you know, everyone exit, but for the record, you know, I just wanted to congratulate everyone on behalf of the board. I think that, you know, a night like this to honor our staff and our support staff is very, very important for all of us to be able to see and for the town to be able to see as well. My mom was a teacher in a neighboring district for thirty-seven years, and she was a Governor Educator of the Year back in two thousand and five. I was in fifth grade at John Adams at the time. And I still remember it, we still talk about it to this day, and we still have the plaque hanging up in our garage area. And so, you know, for all of the teachers and all of the support staff that were here tonight, you and your families will look back on this evening for many years to come. It's truly wonderful to see what great staff we have. And again, the fruits of all of our labor is coming together. So thank you and congratulations again.
Anyone else have anything they want to add?
I just wanted to second that sentiment. I really think that teaching and being an instructor or support staff to school districts, to schools, to students, really is a labor of love. And I do wish everyone was here for this, but I also live by the philosophy of wherever you enter, every room that you go into, you should make that a better place when you leave it. Like you have that opportunity to make an impact wherever you go. And I think that our teachers, our support staff are really doing that. And I really just thank them for their efforts. It was wonderful to see their principals celebrating them, their colleagues celebrating them. I'm hearing that this is not being done consistently throughout all districts anymore, but it really is prime time to operate, to recognize these people for the work they do and the impact that they have on our students, our community, and hopefully the future of our community going forward. Thank you.
Well said, Ms. James. All right, so we are going to jump back to our agenda.
All right, so we are going to jump back to our agenda. Mr. Brockman, can you please take item number six?
Sure, Madam Vice President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board meeting minutes. Regular public meeting minutes, January 25th, 2023. Executive meeting minutes, January 25th, 2023.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Open minutes are accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Any communications this evening?
No communications. I do have our, my administrative report.
Great.
So good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers, the millions of viewers out there in TV land. So far, it has been a relatively mild winter with more rain, as we've been seeing today. But please keep an eye on our website, social media, and Kimvo messages in case of inclement weather and changes to our school schedules because we do know that, you know, even through March, we can, we can get adverse weather. And, you know, I won't say anything about snow days just yet because I'm not going to jinx it. Parent-teacher conferences for the spring are scheduled for March 9th and 10th. Those are both half-days for students, and your child's teacher will be reaching out to schedule a conference as one is needed. Congratulations to the boys' basketball team for their win against Princeton in the first round of the state playoffs last night. They will be playing against South Brunswick at 5:30 PM tomorrow night, Thursday, February 23rd, here in North Brunswick again. So we'd love to see you come out and support them. Also, congratulations to the MBTH Winter Percussion Ensemble for coming in first place at the Tournament Indoor Association Competition at Pensacola High School on Saturday, February 10th in the category of Stationary Percussion Scholastic Open Category. This group has been led by Paul Bon Jovi with the assistance of his late, his former students and current MBTSD music teachers, Daniel Nudeman, Joe Scala, and high school band director Jeffrey Smith. We anticipate honoring this team at a future board meeting. And finally, this month, we also celebrated both our school resource officers and our school counselors on special days to thank them for all they do to support our students. That is it for my report this evening, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Shiroka. We can move on to our student reports.
Thank you, Ms. Toth. For starters, SGO sponsored a successful winter pep week. The seniors finally took home the Spirit Cup after a close pep rally battle in which we won, as me and Gerard predicted. We were also able to raise over $400 towards our fundraising efforts for the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
And second, on Friday, January 27th, student government held our annual town show where we had 15 wonderful acts, and there was a tie for first place between the returning champions Channel 9 and Anusha Bakalagata, who sang and danced really well.
Yes. And with the coordination of junior Rhea Patel, MBTHS held a TEDx Youth Event on Thursday, February 16th. Six students shared their ideas on various topics which were well-prepared and very insightful.
And then this Thursday, or sorry, this afternoon, a few hours ago, was our staff versus students' basketball game. And the final score was 45 to 26, with the teachers taking the dub. Teachers beat the students.
Wow.
Even though Mr. Miserall wasn't playing.
Not cleared yet, right, Dr.?
They still beat the students, much to, actually, I think the students wanted them to win, but it's fun.
Yes, and this Friday evening, our Black Cultural Alliance will host their Black History Month Celebration beginning at 7:00 PM.
And lastly, next Friday and Saturday, MBTHS will hold our 38th Annual Rockathon. This event begins at 5 o'clock on Friday evening and concludes at 5:00 PM on Saturday evening. For those that don't know, it's basically a bunch of students sitting in rocking chairs for 24 hours to raise money for charity.
Wow.
And students will rock the night away, raising money for Hugs for Brady is a charity, and the North Brunswick Food Bank, and the Make-A-Wish Foundation. But that is, that is all for student reports, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, we will move on to our committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Wen for Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Human Resources Community Relations Committee met today, as of prior to this meeting, to discuss various personnel and community topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are either resigning or retiring, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. The committee also discussed some new job postings, and there are several new hires on the agenda, both certificated and support staff and substitutes, and we welcome them all to the district. We discussed any upcoming leases of absences and how those positions are going to be filled. There was also a second and final reading on updates to several policies, including the harassment, intimidation, bullying, and other ones regarding safety drills. The NJ Sky Climate Survey was also released. The staff has already completed their surveys, and we ask that all our students and families take the time to fill out the, this very important survey. We also discussed the annual violence and vandalism report, which was presented to the board earlier by Mrs. Keita, so thank you. And we discussed some possible changes to the school calendar in the future.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wen. We can move on to Dr. Patel for our education report.
Thank you. So the committee met on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. The committee discussed assessments and grants, including NJ GPA, which is scheduled for Monday, March 13th, and Tuesday, March 14th, for all 11th-grade students who must sit for this assessment. State legislation has been introduced to potentially eliminate any high school assessment test as a specific requirement for graduation, not just the current NJ GPA. Summer Academy grades one to four and Summer Institute grades five to eight will be funded by Title I, Title III, and CEIS grants. Based on the funds, there may be a reduction in sections or grade levels. The district received an ESAR spending update for continued ESAR funding items for 2023 and 20 to 2024, and items that will be funded in the local budget instead. The district is budgeting in various technologies such as cybersecurity, Chromebooks, and ESL programs for 2023 to 2024 school year. The extended school year for special needs students will run from June 30th to August 11th at various schools in the district. Doctoral research project at MBTMS from a Rutgers student is actually on the agenda, is on the agenda to be approved to be, tonight, to be conducted on the agenda, to be approved tonight. The committee also discussed the elimination of several mandatory policies as per recommendation of Strauss Esme as part of our policy check. These are listed on the agenda, these are listed on the agenda, and additionally, we had the first reading of the Policy 5200 Attendants Policy and Regulation. We also had a second reading of the following policies that are listed on the agenda and will be approved tonight. That concludes the education report.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. Ms. Keith, is there any update for negotiations tonight?
There were no negotiation updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, we could conclude with Ms. James for Business Ops.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Toth. So the Business Operations Committee met on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. During our committee meeting, we discussed facilities, finances, and proposed policies up for second reading, along with an update on our policy audit. We received comprehensive updates from our vendor, USA Architects. Flowing from that, we learned that our long-range facility plan was later approved, was last approved in late 2021. And with that, we remain mindful of our next deadline in the next few years, as that plan is updated every five years. We discussed MBTH's, MBTHS's roof, which is essentially complete. There was a temporary repair that will need to be finalized in the spring. As it relates to the security vestibule being placed in Patio A at the high school, that work will be done over our spring recess and will provide an added layer of safety for that school. Last month, we provided an update on the water damage and those claims being submitted to insurance. That was done and those losses have been reimbursed and are underway to being replaced. The solar work at the middle school is now 100% complete, which is wonderful news. Linwood will be the last section for roof work to be done. We anticipate that this work can be done in the fall of 2023. Last month, we discussed the use of ESAR funds for cafeteria HVAC units. JA, John Adams is complete and the remaining three are underway. As to the district's HVAC assessments, we will submit a rod grant for this purpose and hope to receive approval from the state for this important work that will help us to moderate costs via energy efficiency and better utilize our equipment. The district is in the early stages of looking at what can be done with our science labs to bring them up to date. This will be an ongoing effort and planning will, will take place beyond this year. As it relates to finances, we received an update from our district auditor, who walked us through the current status of his annual report that will be filed on or around March 17th of 2023. This information will be shared with the public on March 15th, as the governor's address is on February 28th, and state aid data will be released on March 1st. Since the report is not yet final, I will not speak to the specifics of the findings, but at this moment, the findings do appear positive, which is consistent with the district's financial practices from prior years. I want to thank Rose and her team, of course, for all of the work they do in the business office. As it relates to policies, the committee had a second reading of three policies which are in the board's bylaws. That's Policy 152, 161, and 162. And at this time, there's no issues with those policies they will be going through with this night's board agenda. As indicated last month, an audit was conducted of those policies. We plan to move forward with the, with first abolishing, as I believe Ms. Toth mentioned and Dr. Paragi mentioned, as well. And from there, we will review any more policies that need to be reviewed for first reading to ensure integrity of those policies and that they align with the law and the district's present practices. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. James. And thank you, everyone, for your reports this evening. Mr. Wen, can you please take item number nine?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Okay, so at this point in the meeting, we're going to review our agenda. Just so everyone knows who's following along at home, we receive the agenda prior to this meeting. We have all reviewed the agenda prior to this meeting as well, so we are going to go through briefly, page by page. Any changes that we have received today will be updated in bold for everyone's viewing. So we will start on page number three. And four. Page number five. And page number six. Page number seven. And page number eight. Number nine. And page 10. Moving on to page 11. And page 12. Page 13. And 14. Page number 15. And number 16. I'd like to make mention of our budget meeting, which is taking place on March 15th, 7:00 PM. We can move on to page 17. This is what Mrs. Keita was referring to in her presentation. And number 18, moving into some finance items. Number 19. And 20. And then 21. 22. 24. And 25. All right, we can flip back to page number two. We are going to do a public session on agenda items only. At this time, if anyone wants to come up to the microphone and make public comment, this is on agenda items only, we ask that you come up to the podium, sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, Ms. James, can you please close the public portion of the meeting?
Sure, I move to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. All right, and then, Ms. Keith, can you please take item number 13?
Yes, Madam Vice President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items one through four, policy and transportation.
Second.
Mr. Ali.
President?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes, on all items except for miscellaneous item 1A, from which I abstain.
Thank you. All the motions have been approved and accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. All right, we can go all the way to page 24. Number 14 on our agenda, this is going to be a public session on any matter. Same thing as before, if you'd like to come and make public comment about anything, you can come up to the podium. Please sign in, state your name, and you'll have just a brief three minutes to speak. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. All right, we are going to move to go into closed session, whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore it be resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of, of an action upon the here-and-after specified subject matters. The general nature of this subject matter to be discussed is as follows, student matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above-stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. And my apologies, personnel matters as well. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Easy enough. I think I got it.
Oh my gosh, did you see the panel?
Okay. Can I please have a motion to return to open session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. And can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Nice job, everybody. Thank you.